Everybody else off set? All right. Good evenings. Welcome to the June 16, 2025 meeting of the Woodbridge Board of Education. I will reconvene the meeting at 7:05 PM following a board executive session. For the public's information and for the record, no votes were taken in executive session. This meeting is being recorded and the recording will be available on the district website. I will now call the roll. Stephen Lawrence.
Present.
Sarah Beth Delprey.
Present.
Lauren Francasi.
Present.
Jeff Hughes.
Here.
Mike Strambler.
Here.
Erin Williamson.
Present.
I'm Lynn Piazek chair this evening. Dr. Jay Daya and Brooke Hopkins are not with us. Staff in attendance this evening include Ms. Vonda Tenzza Superintendent, Ms. Donna Coonan Director of Business and Operations, Ms. Annalisa Sherman Principal. I would ask everyone to please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Sarah Beth, do we have any correspondence?
No, I think we don't have any.
Okay. Any public comment? Seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. The minutes from the May 20 regular meeting are included in this evening's consent agenda along with the budget narrative, a budget summary, the detailed financial report and combining financial statements. Also included for acceptance are the following policies for 30-day review. Policy 6140.101, student nutrition, student wellness as revised. Policy 6144, controversial issues presented with no changes. Policy 6145.8, activity funds management, which is a new policy. Policy 6146.1, grading system as revised. Policy 6153, field trips as revised. Policy 6156, use of computers in instruction presented to delete. Policy 6161, equipment, books and materials provision selection presented with no changes. Policy 6161.1, evaluation selection of instructional materials presented with no changes. Policy 6161.2, care of instructional materials as revised. Policy 6161.3, comparability of services, which is new. Policy 6162.51, surveys of students as revised. Policy 6162.6, use of copying devices as revised. Policy 6162.7, use of proprietary software product as revised. Policy 6163.3, live animals in the classroom as revised. Policy 6164.11, drugs, tobacco, alcohol presented to delete. Policy 6164.12, acquired immune deficiency syndrome, AIDS presented with no changes. Policy 6171/6171.1, special education as revised. Policy 6171.2, preschool special education as revised. Policy 6172.1, gifted talented program presented with no changes. Policy 6172.4, Title I parent involvement presented with no changes. Policy 6173, homebound and hospitalized instruction as revised. Policies 4118.51, use of social media by employees, which is new. And that's it. Does anyone on the board wish to extract anything from tonight's consent agenda for Seeing none, may I have a motion to accept the consent agenda? Stephen Lawrence, do I have a second? Jeff Hughes, motion to accept the consent agenda as presented, made by Stephen Lawrence, seconded by Jeff Hughes. All those in favor? It's unanimous, Marsha, thank you. Next item on the agenda is the superintendent's report.
It could be me. I'm going to start and then Lisa's report will kind of connect to mine as we honor a very special guest. But I'm going to start with just a few things. The first thing on my report is that we have a certificate of recognition for Lynn Piazek, nine up surprise. You were nominated to receive the CAS Association Distinguished Friends of Education Award.
Oh, my goodness. Well, isn't that lovely?
It is lovely. You did not receive it. However.
Just to be mentioned.
I did look and the person that received it was actually a large group of people. So you probably were just simply outnumbered because you are clearly a strong friend of education. And so on behalf of the Connecticut Association of Schools, I give you this certificate of recognition and it really is all about the voluntary contributions that you have offered to our school district in a variety of ways over time. This is no small feat to be nominated and recognized for this award.
Well, thank you all so much. Thank you. Wow, that's very much an honor.
It is.
I'll point it out to my family to make sure that they appropriately recognize me.
Quickly, I'm a little skeptical.
Distinguished.
To see the hour.
It was like distinguished, Donna. So I want them to know that.
Who is that? What are we doing?
Thank you. Thank you so much. That's really very lovely.
So the second thing on my report, actually, we were going to display, but it looks like the town has another meeting and it kind of commandeered all of the technology so that we could stream and display at the same time. So it is, is that true or false?
Did you not bring the laptops?
I have a laptop.
Do you have the laptop presentation on the laptop?
No.
No. That's okay.
We're just going to follow along.
It's in their binders. Thank you so much, though, for trying. A plus for effort. So in your binders or your packets is my end of the year overview. I will have this posted tomorrow on the website for the community. I think it is a nice community piece to have. And so really, if you look at it, it's a year in review. So the front page for our two people out there simply highlights some of the artwork and pictures from the year. The second page is all about our Board of Education and our leadership team. It talks about our board goals. It talks about our vision and mission. It's a lovely record of who served on the board this year with a little insert. I tried to estimate how many hours each board member dedicated and it came out to be a minimum of 95. That's a lot of hours. So thank you for those hours. The next page highlights the BOA portrait of the graduate as well as our strategic plan goals and how they connect. The next page is super important and I'm not going to go through all of it, but these are accomplishments and highlights from this year. Some of them are data points from various surveys and achievements that we've had. Some of them are school benchmarks and activities that we've held. But I think it is wonderful for our community to know some of the many. It was hard. The administrative team was helping me and Lisa Sherman said, there's too many. It's too hard. And I said, we are fitting it on one page. So the font continued to shrink, but there are some really great things here about our school. The next page summarizes our data. Great. So we talk about some of our data. This is our smarter balance data in terms of ELA and math and it touches on the percentage our students meet or exceed in general. And then it touches on our high needs versus non-high needs population. And then it touches on our growth. And it's really noteworthy that all of our data points are very strong, which is not the case in every district. We're very fortunate to have strong, you know, growth and strong achievement in many of our groups. The next page talks about our NGSS, our science assessments and our lost links assessments. And again, much of this data, some of this data is from last May and June, but some of this is also current in terms of, you know, how many students have we exited this year? How many different languages do we have in our school? So there's some wonderful things here. If people in our community want to see what Beecher has to offer, we have a lot of diversity to offer here as well. Our, I believe it's our final page. Our final page touches on our budget and it also highlights our facilities, our safety and security in a safe and secure manner, and our informational technology. So, you know, I think it's a nice way to honor our district and I will make sure that it's up there in presentation format for our community to see. So that's the next part of my presentation. And then the third part, this is my last Board of Education meeting. And, you know, it is obviously difficult. It's mixed emotions to retire. You know, some people are running out the door. I think it's a good thing that I'm not. I think it's a tribute to all of you and to our district that so much of me would be happy to stay. And yet I'm, you know, healthy enough and young-ish enough to be able to go out and enjoy my family and to just do some other things. But I will stay connected in education and the new superintendent, Christopher Montini, have already started. We've started transitioning. We will continue to meet. We're meeting next Monday for a chunk of time and then we have more time next week if needed. So I will make sure that you all have my number and my email. And it has been a joy and an honor to serve in this district and to live with you. So thank you. That is my report.
Thank you. Ms. Sherman? Beecher Road School update.
I have a couple of quick updates before I have something to celebrate. That's okay. The very first thing, there are so many celebrations of learning at the end of the year that it's really hard to just pick a couple. So I decided to pick the ones that were the biggest. So, and then I'm going to end with a very special announcement of our Teacher of the Year, in case you can't guess who it is. She might be sitting behind me. So first of all, on June 5th, we culminated our year-long study of CARES, which is cooperation, assertion, responsibility, empathy, and self-control with a whole school community assembly. And it was in the entire school outside on the field. I was a little nervous when Mr. Sapias and the wellness team said, we're going to go outside, we're going to have a whole school assembly, and by the way, we're going to play a game. And I was a little worried, but they made it happen. It was really, really fun. There was bubbles and dancing and singing. There was a giant game of four corners. That was the activity. It worked. And a lovely community wave. So it was really fun just to be together. We don't have a lot of spaces where we get to be all together as a school community. So it was a really, really fun way to sort of celebrate and culminate our work around CARES and kudos to Mr. Sapias and the members of our wellness team for organizing it. And of course, I said, you're going to keep doing this next year, right? And Jimmy laughed at me and said, of course I am. Also, Field Day, Field Day is back and better than ever this year. We had a huge success. We had more stations, more activities. Our sixth graders were phenomenal. They are helpers on this day. We really look to them to lead the littles in all of the activities and it's so fun to see them step up and be leaders and, you know, practical seventh graders. And I have to give a big, big shout out to our PE and health teachers, Andrew Lovaway, Anthony Taddy, and Ariane Buzzard for organizing once again a really fabulous Field Day. And a big thanks to the PTO because they organized the Fun Run, which raised quite a bit of money for our school once again. And they also donated the inflatable slides, the water truck, and lots of other items and hours of support. And then my new favorite tradition that we have at Beecher is a clapout. And all of our sixth graders march through the hall and the entire community lines the hallway and we cheer and clap and give them high fives. And it's a really lovely way to sort of end our sixth graders and send them off into the middle school. And right after our clapout, we went outside for our promotion ceremony. And I got to say that the promotion ceremony was once again, it was beautiful. It was a gorgeous day, not, a little bit hot, but not incredibly hot. And it really takes so many people to make it successful. So I just really want to acknowledge Laura Abbott in the North Office. She is the one who organizes the program. She organizes the student certificates. Anthony Billings, Rachel Robinson, and Jeannie Traliglio, they do all things tech, including a live stream. I had a number of parents reaching out to me to say, my grand, like their, my child's grandmother can't come. Is there any way? And I was like, we've got it. The live stream is happening. So they did that. Rachel Robinson always makes a special playlist for me. Jeannie Traliglio helps coordinate the printing of the certificates. And Ken and Lexi, our music and band director for the musical accompaniment, Vito Esparro and his crew set up 600 chairs this year and still not enough, but there was 600 this year. And of course, the PTO did an amazing job supporting and speaking. The PTO president spoke. So those are some big highlights about Beecher Road School at the end of the year. But now I have something that I'm very excited to do. Come on over. It's your turn. Our Teacher of the Year, I am so excited to announce our Woodbridge School District Teacher of the Year. It is Ms. Larissa Crocco. So this year, we opened, we changed our Teacher of the Year process. We had a committee. We reviewed Teacher of the Year processes from other districts and we actually revised and changed our process. And this year, we accepted nominations from both staff, non-certified staff, and parents. And Larissa was actually nominated quite a few times for the Teacher of the Year. And I just want to read a snippet because I think that they said it, this person said it even better than I could have. Larissa Crocco cares deeply about the importance of the library. She knows that the library is more than just a place to hold books. It is a vital community space and in many of the best ways, it is the heart of Beecher Road School. Larissa works tirelessly to make the library a welcoming and inclusive community. At any one moment, she could be teaching a class while a small group is working on the other side of the library and a colleague is enjoying a quiet and welcoming haven. As a librarian, Larissa is exemplary in fostering student engagement and creating independent thinkers. From her littlest students to her biggest ones, Larissa teaches students to be active participants in their own learning. She fills them with wonder and curiosity and also gives them the tools to become more and more independent library visitors. And then another member who nominated Larissa said that Larissa understands the importance of the whole child and starts with an SEL check-in with the most adorable photos. It's true. That's actually so amazing. And sometimes I go and I check her check-in and I pick which animal I am. This reminds students that their feelings and experiences are valued. There are many ways that Larissa also contributes to our school community. She sometimes presents at our faculty meetings, sharing valuable information about the latest news and media literacy. She is an extremely supportive colleague, often going out of her way to check on a fellow teacher. How many of us get texts from Larissa about something that reminded her of us? Also true. Or of a special sale she wants us to know about? Also true. I also often see Larissa representing Beecher at outside events. She recently volunteered her time at International Night and I worked alongside her at Woodbridge Like Me Day. So it is an absolute honor to recognize Larissa Crocco as the Woodbridge School District 2025-2026 Teacher of the Year.
These are for you. Second round of flowers. Okay.
Thank you.
Any questions for me?
Anything you want to share, Larissa? I think you should. I just want to say that when the librarian gets Teacher of the Year, that really means that our community is thriving. It means everybody is working together and collaborating. So it's not just me, it's our whole community, I think, that should be proud of themselves.
Thank you, Lisa.
Absolutely.
Next, Beecher Road School Infrastructure Building Committee update.
Sure. We met June 12, a very productive meeting. We are starting to really narrow down the plans. Our administration team is looking them over for a meeting coming up on this Wednesday 8:00 AM. We'll really help our consultants zero in and actually start to pricing. So we're in a good place.
Great. Any questions for Jeff?
Where's that meeting?
WebEx.
WebEx, online.
Wednesday 8:00 AM, WebEx.
Finance Committee report?
All right. Well, we have a fair bit to cover and coming from a very good place. So just to run through the top line numbers, we are at our penultimate budget report of the 2024-2025 school year. So we are currently $98,000 under budget. So part of our conversation this evening, we'll be thinking about what we, how we might want that surplus allocated or the surplus that we do finally end with once all the numbers are in. So this compares to about $112,000 last month. For the 100 series, we're looking at an estimated $70,000 surplus. This is compared to an estimated $60,000 surplus last month, which reflects more savings in the pair of lines balanced a bit by some increased teacher stipend payments. 200 series benefits show a $35,000 surplus at this point, just up slightly from the prior month. Changes in the 100 series resulted in some savings in benefits costs. However, these were balanced by reduction in anticipated savings and health insurance costs. 400 series purchased property services is currently forecast to be close to $9,000 under budget, which is roughly unchanged from last month. 500 series other purchase services, this includes student transportation, tuition, interns, is currently running an estimated almost $20,000 under budget, although this is down from a surplus of about $30,000 last month, which reflects some increased pupil transportation expenses. 800 series dues, fees and miscellaneous, including the Ezra Academy's nurse, were about $5,000 under budget compared to roughly $1,000 under last month. 700 series furniture and equipment were pretty much on par and I think we're planning to buy some teacher desks with those funds. On the higher expense side of the ledger, 300 series purchased professional services forecast a roughly $12,000 deficit, which is an increase from the estimated $5,000 deficit last month. Basically, we're anticipating savings for audit services. We're going with the new auditor. But however, we had projected that last month. Well, in fact, they sent the bill early. So next year, we're going to realize savings on the audit services, not in this fiscal year. And finally, 600 series materials and supplies were over budget, about $29,000 compared to $16,000 over last month. And I actually realized in my notes, I wasn't sure what that was.
Well, as we began to feel that some of the surplus is going to be realized, or savings, I should say, we sort of allowed Vito's group to put through some POs for things, you know, two full pallets of stripper and waxer to get us through, stock up on motors and things that he likes to keep in stock, whereas until we were sure, we didn't want to go too crazy.
No, and this is great and we so appreciate his planning ahead.
Yeah.
You know, and the foresight of the district in terms of supporting, having reserve materials on hand, so it's not, you're then waiting weeks to affect the repair. Questions? I think we're good. Well, so I'm not doing your job for you.
No, moving on to, are you ready to move on?
We're ready to move on.
Thank you. Approved 24, 20. Well, you know, now I'm an award winner, so whatever. You know, I'm taking a little breather. Uh, you know, I'm taking a little breather.
Let the minions do it.
Right. Approving, uh, the twenty-four, twenty-five surplus expenditures. Do you want to have some discussion around that, where there's a listing?
So we have a list, and the Finance Committee, as you'll see, it's color-coded, um, by capital equipment, educational facilities. We did a little bit, did some suggested prioritization, just in terms of the list we're presenting. Um, but the idea, I mean, if you said, oh, this is all great, the idea would be, oh, we just sort of work down this list, you know, until we ran out of money, until we ran out of surplus.
I do have some updated quote information to share, which changes a few of the numbers. And if you would like me to speak to that.
That would be lovely.
So, um, the Annihil Air Cleaning Product Generation Machine, um, this twelve thousand dollar number is not correct. Um, based on the size of our school, they actually recommend that we have one machine and two substations. And so that full cost of all of that would actually be twenty-three thousand dollars. And that's closer to a six-year payback in terms of the cleaning supplies that we would not have to purchase because this machine would just be generating them with water. And, um, but they certainly would be healthier for all of us to be around. Uh, and the other thing is the golf cart. Uh, we were able to get a quote for a golf cart that, um, is electric and it has four seats. The back seats fold down and can become a flatbed in terms of, uh, carting supplies and things around. Um, and that is, instead of fourteen thousand, we could get one for ninety-two hundred dollars. And yeah, I think Vito thinks I can do a little better on the radios, but not materially, you know, a thousand dollars or two, so. But anyway, if you add up with those changes, up to the orange line is actually, um, just a little over sixty-nine thousand dollars. And, and with my ninety-eight thousand dollar estimate, you know, I don't want to go too much higher than that. I need to leave room for, for things that we, I don't know are out there somewhere.
Great.
I could talk, just talk through the list if that helps the group or. Would that be helpful to anyone? I know the Finance Committee has already heard it all, but.
I don't know that I need to talk.
Okay. All right, so, um, we can have some discussion or we can have a motion.
I mean, I have questions, but.
Okay, go ahead, jump in.
So I guess my first question is, the cleaning machine, I'm just going to call it a cleaning machine. Is that something that could be used regardless of what happens with the building infrastructure committee? Like if, if there was a new building or if there was a remake, like that same machine could be used no matter what?
Correct. It just needs a floor drain and electricity and a certain amount of space in a closet, so.
Okay, so no matter what, that could be used for six years, no matter what happens with the building?
Not that it could be used for six years, but yes, six-year payback, correct, yes, yes.
That's super helpful. Um, I see, I hear the need for the golf cart. I have, I have reservations on the golf cart, um, for a couple of reasons. One being that, um, we haven't needed it, I mean, we've used it, but I don't know that it's an essential supply. I understand that it's a large building, but we could be moving towards a smaller building. Um, and so it seems like a large capital expense to have potentially moved to a smaller building in a couple of years. And, um, I think I, I would rather see that money allocated more directly towards educational needs. Um, so I, I will just express that I have concerns about, I think, given, given this situation that we're in, both in terms of our building, as well as in terms of town finances and being, wanting to be really respectful of the town and, and their, um, and how much money we did ask for this year and their willingness to give us that money. I would, I would want to see that any surplus that we have be used more directly towards the educational expenses. I understand some of the other ones, um, like the cleaning, because there's a cost savings long-term or things that need to be repaired and radios. Um, but that's one that to me, I think, could be viewed as more of a, a luxury item amongst town members. And that, that even, even that perception is of concern to me.
Anyone else?
Well, I'm just wondering if we could hear the, the argument for the golf, the golf cart.
Sure. I will, I will start. Um, so it has come up a number of times since I've been here. And really what we have is a very large campus. We use the word campus and it's extremely large. Um, the, the interior is obviously large. Our security officer logs, on average, seven miles a day, inside and outside. So we are fortunate, you know, that he is fit. Um, but it's really not all about him. It is about efficiency of getting someplace quickly. It is about moving children if somebody is injured on a playground. Our playgrounds are very spread apart. It is about bringing family members to an access and outside event. It is helpful for staff who are bringing equipment to various parts of the outside campus for PE or any of the number of ice cream socials and events that we have. So it is all about efficiency for staff, helpful, um, for security in terms of there's somebody way out there to get out there quickly is, is aided by a, a tool, a device like a golf cart. It does sound like an odd thing, but truly, at, at almost every high school or large middle school campus, they, they do have a golf cart to get around with equipment, um, to take care of things. It's just not as common in an elementary district, but no other elementary district has a school that looks like ours. So it has come up for a variety of reasons and, um, so we just figured over the last couple of years, I don't even think we brought it to you last year, we had it on our list. And I, I'm not even sure we brought it to your attention. We, we chopped it off the list before we even put it forth to you. So it's, it's supported strongly by Vito Esparro, our Facilities Director, by Vidi Lynch, our Security Director, as well as.
The nurse.
The nurse and our health and PE teachers. Those would be NE Day and Summer Enrichment, they were all on board. But again, um, you know, they, they understand that it is a board decision and they were just excited that you would at least consider it.
Do you know what maintenance or is there a special insurance you have to have for it?
Uh, we don't need a special insurance. The maintenance is, um, I think you have to water down the battery at, you know, every day.
But there is. I don't think it's every day.
You don't think it's every day? Um, and yeah, that's all the maintenance there is.
It's just electric, you plug it in, change the battery in a couple of years.
Usually there's a replacement cost of batteries, probably about five to six years, I believe. I don't know how long they last, but I think it's pretty hefty.
I think it's at least five.
Yeah, it's pretty hefty.
I think amity, I think John Byers had said it was at least five.
Yeah.
So I have a question about the, um, I'll call it the cleaning machine too. If, is it because of the, um, fact that the building is so spread out that we need? I don't know, maybe you can help us do the bigger one and then the two, like substations? And so if we moved to a more compact footprint in the building, would that change our need? I think it's based on square footage, but the square footage probably wouldn't really change, even though it would be more compact.
In, in my opinion, if you were with new school, you would still use all three components.
You would?
Yep.
Okay.
And if we moved to like a different flooring type, the cleaning product is for any type of flooring, okay.
Yeah, and, and makes stuff to spray on the tables and makes all the different kinds of products.
How about some examples of the bulk supplies for classrooms?
So, um, we've, you know, encouraged our staff to let Lisa know instead of each of us ordering twenty-four black dry erase markers. Um, you know, so there are certain things that, you know, last year, I think probably everybody bulk ordered scissors. And this year, Lisa said, we may not need to bulk order scissors because now you're going to re-recycle the scissors that you have that are still working. And then we started to realize, okay, maybe I should have bought a little bit higher quality scissors because that's going to last me longer. So there's been a little bit of that tweaking, but pencils, crayons.
Rulers.
Rulers.
Am I correct that this also that reduces then the amount we ask?
Yes, these are things that we might have asked, we did, we did ask parents to send your children with, you know, two boxes of crayons and markers and those are the things. We picked some of those heavy-hitting things that everybody was, was asking for. So then the, the teachers are not asking, it's my understanding that the teachers are not asking the children to bring those items.
The, our list got smaller.
So our list got much smaller and instead of bringing in like every single person going out to Staples or, or Amazon buying exactly three pink erasers, if they order it in bulk, it's just so much better. And if we have the money, then the parents, it's like taking the burden off the parents.
Yep.
It doesn't reduce the burden to zero, I don't think, but it significantly reduces.
That's what I was wondering, how, how much of a burden reduction is there? How shorter is the list now for, for families? Do we have a sense of that?
Um, you know, I didn't compare them last year, we certainly can look at that. I, I didn't compare them after.
You don't know, it's all right.
I heard a lot of qualitative comments from the parents that they, they appreciated how much smaller the list was.
Okay.
Yeah, and they appreciated not having to find sometimes odd numbers of things.
Or brands, because all the teachers got their brand.
That was the other thing that I think, as the years went by, teachers liked the quality of certain brands over others. And so it wasn't just that you could go to the dollar store and buy everything.
Yeah.
Things you had to, if you, if you were trying to meet those teachers' requests, you had to buy certain brands.
Yeah.
So now we are the mean quality control police.
Yeah.
We, we don't get to pick necessarily the quality that they want, but it does take a lot of hassle in that respect off the parents. I know that for sure, I have had parents say that as well.
And then the more bulk we buy in, the better quality we can afford.
Yeah, yeah.
And we can also reuse things, so to that point, like every year, parents were asked to bring in new scissors, right? Well, some parents are very good about keeping all their supplies and some parents, every year, were having to buy new scissors. But the teacher can just keep the scissors.
Right.
And not have parents needing to bring them in and buy them every year.
So I, I'm going to make one suggestion before making a motion. And that is, I'm going to suggest, if everyone's in agreement, or, uh, that we flip PE equipment and golf cart. Um, so if the idea is that as we see what the surplus is, we're sort of working our way down this list.
Mm-hmm.
Um, it seems to me that we, the, the student, student staff transport may need a little more discussion, um, at the board level, you know, for us to kind of get to agreement. And just looking at what our, our anticipated surplus is at this point, you know, odds are, we may not get far enough to do that. But if we did go down, I think additional PE equipment as part of enhancing the learning experience may be a, a simpler thing for us to do. So with that inverted, then I would move that we use the, the projected surplus in the 2024-2025 operating budget as recommended by administration, with any remaining dollars returned to the town.
Okay, uh, do I have a second to that motion? Lauren? Okay, so we have a motion on the floor, um, made by Stephen Lawrence, seconded by Lauren Franchese, which would, um, use the projected surplus in the order that is recommended by the administration, with the exception of moving PE equipment up to, uh, after loop repair. And golf cart would then be the last item on that list of items prioritized. That's the motion, okay? Uh, any discussion on that motion?
I just, I guess I want to understand what, how are we prioritizing? How are we going to make a decision about what gets?
So it would be from this top thing down spending until the money runs out.
Okay, but we have, but we have enough to cover that.
Do all.
Yeah, so I.
Well, you know, those are our main numbers, so things are still coming in. It'll continue to change up and down.
So in the event that we don't have enough to cover everything, we would go down the list, okay?
Yep, that's a common motion.
Okay.
Yep.
All right.
But may I ask a question? Like in the event that we do, I just, I don't want to make anyone unhappy if, if we get it and not isn't what people want. So this motion is that in the event that we do end up with enough money, that the golf cart would be purchased. That's, that's my understanding, so I'm clarifying that motion.
I think first we have to decide if we think that the golf cart is a good use of our funds, of, of our funds, period. Because I think, I hear what you're saying, but that negates the actual discussion that needs to take place, which is, are we comfortable as a board, spending the town's money on a golf cart? I'm not saying, uh, my main, I hear the reason. I'm absolutely not denying that there are valid reasons for a golf, golf cart. My concern comes more around perception and people's understanding and the narrative that can take place at a moment in our time of our school where we really need the town to rally behind us and to see us being fiscally responsible. And my concern is that this item could get, spin a narrative, true or false, that could undermine what we are hoping to achieve over the next year with the Building Committee.
Yes.
I'm not saying that it's not needed, I'm not saying it's not justified. What I'm saying is, most people aren't listening to this discussion at the Board about. And so most people are just going to hear, oh my gosh, why did Beecher buy a golf cart? That's my true fear and, and I think, I actually think that discussion needs to be a discussion we have because I think there's real implications for it.
Okay.
I think, can I?
Because it's a discussion, yeah.
The big discussion, why is there a town golf cart that we don't get to use? I think it's the bigger question, that stays on campus, that's part of the question.
I didn't even know the town had golf carts that were.
It does, isn't it right?
Well, for recreation. It's housed at Beecher Road School.
So there is, there is more to the discussion.
For sure, for sure. Or why couldn't the town support us in working with REC to allow them, or to kind of tell them, you need to allow? I mean, I agree, there is a golf cart, there is a golf cart there. We're asking to buy a golf cart because another town, build, or, and its agency, thank you, we're struggling to figure out how to work in, in collaboration to the best of the town. And, and I agree, like I think all of those things really need to be figured out and explored and discussed before we just buy our own.
I agree with, with you on that. And I really think it's crazy that there's a golf cart already there that we can't figure out a way to work together on this. It's not being used all day long when we would need it.
And we might need to ask some town leadership to get involved and help us figure this out, like.
I support the need for it. I mean, I, I think that, that the argument that, um, Vanda made was, was sound to me. Um, so I'm not opposed to having a golf cart at all. Um, that fact, though, is strange that we have, we have one sitting here on our campus during the day that's not in use. Um, and so why can't we use that? That makes, that makes a lot of sense, that we would try that first and if that can't be worked. And if that can't be worked out, I don't know why it wouldn't be able to be worked out, but if it can't be, then we explore purchasing our own.
Agreed.
Okay, so we have a motion on the table. There's, there's two options here. The motion can be withdrawn and the second can be withdrawn. We can have a new motion or we can vote on the motion that is currently, um, on the table.
Can I ask one more point for discussion about the motion, the order, sorry, no.
Go right ahead.
The loop repair. Um, it's a town loop technically. I don't even know why. To me, that one should fall to the bottom.
After PE.
Or, or should it come off entirely?
Or from off, I mean.
Well. So I, so I would speak to this discussion. I would speak to the fact that the loop is used during school hours. It's posted that it's not.
Community can't use it during the day.
Community based, uh, community usage from seven thirty AM to six PM. So, um, on any day that school is in session, which would then include the month of July. So it's a limited, um, community use. And it is used for instructional purposes with P- P- PE recess and whatever. So I would argue that, Jeff.
Yep, that's fine.
Um, as more of a school.
Mm-hmm.
School-based kind of.
No, that makes sense to me now, please clarify.
So, um, okay.
So, I am going to retract my mo- withdraw, uh, my motion.
I will draw the second to that motion.
And then I'm gonna make a motion. If you're ready. All right. I'm going to move that we use the projected surplus in the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five operating budget as recommended by the administration, excluding from the prioritize potential surplus uses list, the golf cart with any remaining dollars returned to the town.
I'll second. Okay, discussion?
Second. Motion made by Stephen Lawrence, seconded by Lauren Franchi. Discussion.
Well, if we're taking something out, is there anything else, though, was thought about being on this list?
Well, if you're okay with things that are, that we don't, that are below the line now, should we be able to fit some painting in of the front of the building, would, is the board supportive of that?
Have to get done if we're talking about, like, is there a timeline in which painting has to be done for any type of?
Well, we would have to commit before June thirty to the vendor, just to make it current, your expense.
I meant more like for your insurance or something, you have to do this painting in this time for, like.
No, no.
No, so there's no, we don't have to paint.
Do not.
Okay, no, I wouldn't put paint in personally.
But, yeah, we can also just return more money to the town.
I think the hard part is the building, right? And so it's, again, if we spend money on painting, it's harder than for us to go before the town if one of the options that we're looking at is a new building, right? Because the more we invest, even superficially in this building, the, the, it's like sunk, what is that, sunk cost, right? I get that we need to eat, upkeep this building while we're figuring it out. And I get that a new building or any, or even an extension is not gonna happen imminently. But we're at this fragile pivotal moment of discussion where lots of people are coming and, and and I, again, the same thing with the golf cart. It's like, well, they just spent twenty thousand dollars painting the building.
Right.
And so I do think that fiscally responsible, it would be if there's not other academic needs, like supply needs or, like, I would be more comfortable if there were other, um, things that teachers needed to enhance their classrooms. I'd be way more supportive of spending the money there. Like if there were other things teachers asked for that didn't get on this list because other items made it, I would be way more supportive of meeting other teacher requests that cut down on what they potentially spend on their classrooms every year or just things that can be taken, like a rug, you can use it no matter which kind of building we're in. Um, or furniture, that would be to me, we're gonna use that no matter what type of building we end up in. I think this is a unique year and we really have to think about what we're voting on.
Any other discussion?
I guess, can I ask, were there things teachers asked for that didn't make it onto this list?
And we won't just take the extra, do like twenty thousand for classroom supplies? Would that be, seem like too, too much?
I, I think it might be if.
I guess the other question I have about, so I, I, is everybody, does everybody feel about the golf cart if we don't work this out with REC that we should still not get the golf cart? So, because I'm, I'm open to getting the golf cart. I'm actually supportive of getting it if this does not work out with REC.
I don't think you're gonna get that by the end of June thirtieth and you need to spend this money by June thirtieth.
We, we have a good relationship with the town. We can say, we are returning this nine thousand dollars to you in hopes that if we can't get something out, you might allow us to come ask you next year for it or something.
I think that's the best option.
We certainly could also talk to the town between now and the end of the.
Yeah, I don't see why, why would that be?
As long as they're working, we can find them and talk with them. And they may not be ready to respond, but we certainly could try to talk to the town.
I would wanna hear more about how that went and what, where we ended before voting for a golf cart. I just would, I think it's, I think there's political implications for this year.
I could see the headline.
Yeah, absolutely. One hundred percent.
Yeah, I think there's.
With all our faces on a golf cart.
Right.
I think there's definitely optics there, but I do see on such a large campus and that really truly is what it is that, that it is very difficult to navigate that. And you have children who have all sorts of things that happen on that campus and there's a lot of, a lot of ground to cover if there is an emergency. Um, and the school is incredibly safe and the staff does a wonderful job, but I can imagine that that's also a, a worry.
It is.
About just accessibility, getting, um, getting students or, um, a nurse or whatever needs to happen. So I can see, you know, where that's coming from, from a staff perspective. So as somebody who, you know, I, I can get on board with the golf cart, but I also understand the optics of the golf cart and how folks might perceive it. But I, I really do hope that, you know, maybe with some collaboration with the town that, um, we can get to a good place where we can get that for the school. Cause I do, I do think it's, um, I don't think it's a frivolous type of, you know, fun.
Yeah.
I mean, it, it's fun for elementary kids to get a new golf cart for the school and I'm sure there'd be like a cool logo on it or something, but.
That's a fake injury, so.
Right, um, but, but it is, it is, I mean, I don't think it would be, it's unreasonable at Amity that there's, you know, security that are navigating, you know, the parking lot with kids in it, walking through and, you know, being able to get athletics and things like that. I think very similar things happen on the campus at Beecher at all hours of the day. They're just littler people. Um, so it would be great if it could happen, but I understand where we are and maybe returning some money to the town and letting them know that, you know, we talked through this quite a bit and are just hoping that they can collaborate a little more. Might get us somewhere.
Okay, could you repeat your motion? I'm sorry. Or Marcia, could you repeat that motion?
I may have to.
You may amend it depending on.
Yeah, or do, wait, I'm not retracting, I'm withdrawing?
I don't, no, well, wait, what is the motion that is now on the table?
With that, um, we use the projected surplus from the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five operating budget as recommended by administration on the prioritization potential list, excluding the golf cart with any remaining dollars returned to the town.
But that would leave the painting.
Right.
So I think, can, well then can I amend to say removing the golf cart and exterior painting?
And you amend that second?
Yes.
Okay. Is there any discussion on the now new amended motion? Are you good, Marcia?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. No discussion? Okay. I'm like, do I? Do I let, do I do this as a raise your hand? Yes. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by raising your hand. Good. Okay, it's unanimous, Marcia. I also have to second guess you people. All right, so are you set with, you, you know where we're headed?
Yeah, I mean, we just may end up returning a little more to the town than we normally do. And, and we have the reason why we're doing that.
Right.
We're.
And we can remind them of it if we need something throughout the year about how, how we really were financially thoughtful. And we've now tried to get the golf cart through REC and we've tried for three or four months and it's still not working. And now we're, you know, things like that.
Okay, next it is reconcile twenty-five, twenty-six budget. So, who would like to speak to that?
I would.
Thank you.
Um, so, uh, this is just, um, finalizing what we, what we brought to you, um, after the, uh, Town Board of Finance asked us to cut a hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars, um, from our budget. And showing you the accounts and how we're doing that. Um, we anticipate some teacher savings due to a retirement, uh, being able to replace that teacher with a, you know, teacher with less experience further down on the salary grid. Um, our SEAMers rate for next year that we did not know when we produced the budget came in, um, two percent less than, um, we put in the first draft of the budget. Um, we went out to market for medical insurance and we were able to, we had originally estimated a nine percent increase. We were able to get, uh, insurance at a four point seven percent increase. And, um, as, um, Stephen mentioned earlier, we went out to bid for auditors and our, our audit contract will be seventeen thousand dollars less than we, uh, were on track to pay with our previous auditors. And the sum of all those things is a hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars, which makes our twenty-five, twenty-six, uh, approved budget of eighteen million, five hundred twenty-five thousand, eight hundred fifty-five dollars.
Well, um.
Thank you.
Um, do we have a motion?
We do. I move that we approve the reconciliation of the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six operating budget as presented by administration.
And do I have a second? You do? Thank you.
I'm sorry, who was that?
Sarah Beth. Uh, motion made by Stephen Lawrence and seconded by Sarah Beth Delprey to reconcile the twenty-five, twenty-six budget as presented. Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous? Thank you. Next is the twenty-five, twenty-six lunch price increase. Is that you too, Donna?
Yeah. Um, okay, so, um, our district has not, um, increased our school lunch prices in, um, since the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty school year. Um, there was a waiver given during COVID where we didn't, you know, we weren't paying for lunches and we didn't, um, so we didn't have to do that. Um, the USDA has a, uh, paid lunch equity tool that you put your data in and it tells you what you should be charging for your lunches. And, um, ours came out at three dollars and eighty-six cents. However, we, since we are, um, just a K to six district, they, they readjust that. And, um, our number is actually three dollars and fifty-six cents. Uh, we're currently charging three dollars. Um, we have listed out, uh, the prices of, uh, the counties and the state and those of our, um, fellow BOA districts. Um, and we are recommending that we phase in, um, thirty cents each year over two years so that next year we will charge three dollars and thirty cents for a meal and the following year, uh, three dollars and sixty cents, uh, anticipating that the, the tool, the calculator will take us there by then. Any questions?
Any questions on that? Okay, do we have a motion?
Yes, we do. I move that we authorize an increase in the student lunch, I'm thinking it should be price.
Price?
Uh, from three dollars to three dollars and thirty cents for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school year and another thirty cents for the twenty twenty-six, twenty-seven school year as recommended by administration.
Do I have a second to that? Aaron, motion made by Stephen Lawrence, seconded by Aaron Williamson to increase student lunch prices. Thirty cents for the next school year, thirty additional cents for the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year. Uh, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Sorry.
It's unanimous. Okay. Um, policy committee, here we go.
I am gonna go through these so that we don't have to go through them when we vote. Um, okay, so sixty-one, forty-two, one oh one. Um, this was a great policy, but it had a lot of superfluous language explaining why the policy was important. And then also giving like examples that we just didn't think actually needed to be in a policy. Um, and, you know, talking about what won't be sold by naming like very random few things. It just, we took out anything, we basically took out things that seemed superfluous to the actual policy and the need for policy implementation. Um, the next one, um, is controversial issues. Um, we didn't make any changes to that. We just wanna vote on it so that we can say, you know, it's been updated as of this date as we go through them. Um, the next one was, sorry, that controversial issue was six one four four, six one four five point eight, the activities fund management. This is a new one. Um, as Vonda noted, we actually do have a number of activity funds, so it's been dealt a policy around it, um, which we haven't previously had. So, um, Kate sent it to us to consider and we liked it. And so we are going to, um, hopefully adopt it. Six one four six point one, grading systems. We, we thought that the language in here was a little confusing about, um, the, we wanted to add may because changing a student's grade is a pretty notable thing and it really takes a significant thing for an administrator to go in and kind of overroll a teacher. And we didn't wanna imply that that was a common occurrence or that these things should have, that teachers should make these things, um, options for kids to change their grade post, right? We really wanted to emphasize that this is like an extenuating circumstance and it may happen, but so we just clarified that language a little bit more. Um, field trips is six one five three. Um, we revised this, again, this is, we wanted to clarify, um, that things are at the main office, not at the library media center. Also, some of the language could have been interpreted that, um, that the school was responsible for all funding of all field trips and that we would never ask parents to contribute. And that's not how we have operated, obviously. We do put, I, I'm very proud of the fact that we put notes that if funding is a barrier, to please reach out and we don't keep funding as a reason kids can't go on field trips. I think that's important. But we didn't want there to be any confusion around kind of the fact that we do sometimes ask parents and families to contribute to our field trips. Um, the next one is, uh, 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 okay, uh, fi- six one five six, use of computers in instruction. The next one is, okay, uh, fi- six-one, five-six, use of computers in instruction. We deleted this. I believe we talk about computers and it really seems repetitive of other things that we had already reviewed and unnecessary thing and it also seems quite antiquated the language of it, um, since we use more than just computers nowadays. Six-one, six-one, equipment books and materials. There's no changes to this. There are a lot of forms to it, but there's no changes to it. Six-one, six-one point one, evaluation, selection of instructional materials. Lynn, you had said that there were no changes, but I believe there were changes, that we talked about deleting this. And it shows that it's deleted here. So I just want to make sure because that was noted in the consent agenda that we are in agreement, that we are thinking of deleting this.
I guess so. I'm sorry.
Vonda?
These were regs we were deleting.
Yeah. I will say that many of these guidelines, this was a reg, so this was, it got confusing to us because in our, so if you look at it, it has an R, which means it's a regulation. Okay? So as a policy committee and as a board, we only oversee policies, we don't oversee regulations, but CAPE, for whatever reason, identified this as a, as a policy when they did our review. And when we read it, we had a lot of concerns with the language that was in here. So we figured that we would delete it for now and at some point the administration could look to revise and put different regs, but we wanted to make it clear both in our policies and for CAPE's review that this is no longer something we are abiding by or looking. Technically, it's a reg, so normally we would not vote on it, but we just wanted to vote on it to be very clear because CAPE, for whatever reason, viewed it as a policy. But it's not something we would use anyways. So six-one, six-one point two, care of instructional materials. We took out the copyright law compliance. It seemed very strange and out of place here and that exact same language exists in another policy, literally verbatim, exact same language. The next one is sixty-one, sixty-one point three, comparability of services. This is a mandated policy. We cannot change it. It's about Title I schools. It doesn't impact us at all because we are not a Title I school, but we must have this policy in our policies to be compliant with the law. Sixty-one, sixty-two point five-one, surveys of students. We took out like a sentence that seemed redundant in the front and then we took out, we, there were some like weird things that made it seem like they had to give all results of all surveys to us. We were like, okay, that's only if we request it, please don't if we don't request it. We wanted to be clear, some of the language, it was not clear if a request and a response had to be in two weeks. And again, some of it was very redundant of other things that said earlier in the policy. So, um, that was that one. Six-one, six-two point six, that's use of copying devices. We took out things that again seemed just superfluous information, whether prose or poetry or graphic image, like that's just not, those examples were not necessary for the policy. Six-one, six-two point seven, use of proprietary software products. We made no changes to this. Six-one, six-three point three, live animals in classrooms. We made one very, very small change on the second sheet to say educational purposes instead of just of, we said and for the time necessary, because we just wanted to be clear that the animals could stay indefinitely in perpetuity and we added a comma. The next one, six-one, six-four point one-one, drugs, tobacco and alcohol. That is now a different policy. It's five-one, six-one point six, there's five-one, three-one point six. If you can see on the flip side that we actually voted on that policy back in December twenty, twenty, twenty-one. So we actually had duplicative policies and so we're removing it here because it already exists now where it should. Six-one, six-four point one-two, acquired immune deficiency syndrome. We made no changes to that one. Again, that one's required by law. Six-one, seven-one, uh, we made, we made some very small changes to this one. Really, it was around making sure that people were not labeled because of a disability, but somebody with a disability, they were not a disabled person. And so we just wanted to make sure we were being respectful in our language. Six-one, seven-one point two, um, again, same type of thing. We just changed our language to make sure we were being respectful of individuals when we talked about them. Six-one, seven-two point one, gifted and talented. We have no changes. Six-one, seven-two point four, Title I. Again, this is Title I stuff. It doesn't really apply to us and it's mandated. We have no changes. Six-one, seven-three, homebound and hospitalized instruction. We just really wanted to be clear here that it's the treating physician that needs to put this as somebody who has a spouse who is a physician. I know there's sometimes an inclination to use our family and friends for these purposes, but really when we're talking about something as severe as homebound or hospital education, that's such a significant change. We really want to make sure that we're getting that from the treating physician who would know about any reasons for that need. And again, we had a lot of regulations tied to this that we were deleting. Then the last one is a new one, four-one-one, eight point five-one. It's really talking about the use of social media by employees. We had, we've had a lot of questions around social media as it's a increasing issue. We had reviewed some stuff related to students and social media and students and school use and really felt like it is important to provide some guidance to our staff around social media use because I think there can be a lot of questions around what's allowed, what's not allowed. Also, I think it's really important to remember that like as school personnel, there is a higher standard. You are representing the school even sometimes in some of your private communications and that should at least be considered. And so it really lays out kind of what, what your thought process should be. For example, we don't want teachers going on and talking disparagingly about the school district. Many, I will say, many employers also have similar policies as well, that, you know, you can't just get a carte blanche to talk disparagingly and stuff. So this provides guidance for, for teachers and also can facilitate any discussions that administrators may or may not need to have with not just teachers, but all school personnel regarding things that happen, you know, not friending, you know, parents of students that you're in. Some things I would think especially newer teachers may not think about or be as aware of. So I think it's a good policy for us to have. I think it's good that we're doing it during a time of low upheaval in the community. There's no like reason that's prompting this, right? We're being proactive about this, which I think feels really good that we were able to write this, not in response to something, but to really spend the time proactively thinking about what we wanted our policy to be. And that is it.
Okay. Any questions? Well done. So the six, I believe that means the six thousand series is complete.
Yes. We have a couple of little things we need to go back and review, but generally speaking, we have closed out the six thousand.
Yeah. We have. Yeah. Absolutely. So, well done, policy committee, especially well done to Erin.
You did it.
Because the other policy committee members just were like, yay!
We thought we were going to get through like three.
Good work.
Vonda sent us a stack and said, I think we can do it and we did it.
Yep.
You set a high bar.
Yes.
CAPE liaison report?
Yes. Okay. So, Mark, you mark your calendars for the CAPE conference for November twenty-first to the twenty-second of this year. Hotel reservations are made by October twentieth if you're looking to do that.
Although you can make them now.
There is a summer leadership conference at Waters Edge on August seventh, if anyone is interested in attending that. I guess I think I let Marcia know. And that is all for CAPE for now.
Okay. Thank you. Just a little business from the board chair, board members. Board's annual self-evaluation process is underway. Vonda sent out the document with the return date by today so that she can compile the data. Is this what she's doing?
So many.
I've got four.
I've got four.
So if you have been negligent in returning your self-evaluation form to Vonda.
I will not rat you out. I will gratefully accept it.
Get that done, um, sooner rather than later. I'm going, I'm going to say by Wednesday. Will that help you?
I will take them when you can get them to.
Okay. All right.
As long as it happens by next Friday, because after that.
Would appreciate that happening. So, and then, um, I just want to take a moment to, to chat. So after thirty-seven years in the field of education, our current superintendent, Ms. Vanda Tenzel, will be retiring at the end of this month. This will be her last official Woodbridge Board of Education meeting. So tonight I would like to take a moment to reflect on a few of her many accomplishments that have impacted our school district during her tenure. Vonda arrived at Beecher in December of twenty-twenty, following the stress associated, twenty-two, twenty-twenty-two, sorry, following the stress associated with the pandemic, as well as many other district changes and challenges. She immediately set a goal to support a positive school culture while setting a course of instructional enhancements for the school system. For that, we are extremely grateful. The task of being a superintendent is not an easy one, but Vonda tackled the job with a stabilizing presence, consummate leadership and an unwavering commitment to excellence. From spearheading pivotal projects to mentoring colleagues to promoting gratitude, Vonda's contributions have been instrumental to continued successes in our district. One of her first big jobs was addressing changes in state legislation regarding the teaching of reading. She approached this task with a calm demeanor enforced by her extensive experience. She rolled up her sleeves, actively joined Beecher's team of literacy specialists and established the necessary mandated changes to the ELA program. I know that her efforts in this area have inspired her science of reading team and has left an indelible mark on that group of educators. Beecher Road School, as we talked about tonight, encompasses a huge campus with an extremely large building that is bursting at the seams. As with any property, careful oversight and management is critical. Since its inception, Vonda has been an active and contributing advisor on the Beecher Road School Infrastructure Upgrade Building Committee as we continue to work to address the current and future instructional space needs of the school building. At the same time, she provided oversight during the recent building enhancement projects, including the partial roof replacement and site work improvements to the campus. Vonda's ever watchful eye and supervision helped in making this project a huge success. As you heard this evening, when the policy committee report was given, Vonda has worked tirelessly in assisting the board in policy review and revision, as well as adding policies based on both new and updated legislation. This work, Vonda, will continue to guide us in the years to come. For the past two and a half years, Vonda has forged strong community. You can't do this to relationships. Working collaboratively with the Board of Education, Town Leadership and the PTO, always fostering a respectful, affirmative and effective partnership. These affiliations have strengthened our school district in positive ways. These are just a sprinkling of the endeavors that Vonda has tackled in the time that she has been with us. I could go on and on. At the sixth grade moving up ceremony or promotion ceremony on Friday, I spoke to the students about accomplishing meaningful things in life, things that really make a difference. As noted, you all can see that Vanda Tenzel has made a difference. And so, Vonda, as you embark on this very well-deserved retirement, know that your impact will be felt long after your departure. We wish you good health, many moments of happiness. We thank you and we want you to know that we are very grateful for you.
Thank you.
So my board knows I'm like a crier, but it's really hard when the principal is crying and the superintendent is crying too. So, um, because at my kitchen table as I type this, um, I tried really hard not to cry. But, um, very true words, very true words. So thank you.
Thank you.
And I, and I want the viewing community, the community that watches on YouTube, the community that watches on government access TV, to know how lucky we were, the Woodbridge School District and the Woodbridge community, to have you here. Okay. Now we will move on to new business. So first is to ratify the CSEA contract agreement for July first, twenty-twenty-five to June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-eight. So, do we have a motion to approve that agreement? I will let the community know that the CSEA is the union that represents the paraeducators of Beecher Road School and they have unanimously ratified the contract from their perspective. So do I have a motion to approve this contract from the board's side?
I will.
Yep.
You, oh, you want me to read the motion?
Yep.
All right. I move that we approve the draft agreement between the Woodbridge Board of Ed and the Woodbridge Paraeducators Association, CSEA, SEIU Local 2001, effective July first, twenty-twenty-five through June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-eight.
And do I have a second? Mike, motion made by Sarah Beth Del Preet, seconded by Mike Strampler. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor? And that is a unanimous vote from the board's side as well. Next is to authorize a signer of the Woodbridge School District. I'll make a motion that we authorize Christopher Montini, Superintendent, to hire staff for the Woodbridge School District in accordance with Connecticut General Statute ten dash one five-one B, effective July first, twenty-twenty-five. Do I have a second? Stephen? Any discussion? All those in favor? So just for everyone's knowledge, these are all things that we need to do to prepare for, um, the arrival of our new superintendent on July first, twenty-twenty-five, Christopher Montini. And they're all the forms that are necessary for the State Department of Education. So next is. Oh, I did. Did I not read that one? Authorized signature? I didn't. I did the hire. I have it in the wrong letter. I just have to check the agenda to see where I messed up. Take the award away. Okay. I'm sorry, Marcia, because I did. Okay, I'm sorry, Marcia, because I did to hire, and that's in the wrong order.
It's okay.
My apologies for reading the wrong motion. So let's just make believe that we did that one and voted unanimously, and now I'll go back to the signature one. Move that we approve Christopher Montini as an authorized signature and representative for the Woodbridge School District, effective July 1st, 2025.
I'll second it.
Okay, thank you.
Me.
Any discussion on that? All those in favor? Unanimous, thank you. All right, next on the agenda is EDO 99 certification. Move that we accept the permanent single agreement for the Connecticut State Department, oh, did you want to talk about that at all? Do we need to talk about that at all?
I don't think so.
Okay, I'll just make the motion, I think this is the one you have, one of these ones you have to read exactly.
Yep.
Move that we accept the permanent single agreement for the Connecticut State Department of Education's child nutrition programs, and authorize the Board of Education Secretary Sarah Beth Delprey to certify the action of the Woodbridge Board of Education that authorizes Christopher Montini, Superintendent of Schools, and Donna Koonen, Director of Business Services and Operations, as signers of the Connecticut State Department of Education, reimbursement claims submitted on behalf of the Woodbridge School District, effective July 1st, 2025. Do I have a second for that motion? Erin? Any discussion on that motion?
25, 26.
Huh? Did I say 2025?
He said 25.
Effective July 1st, 2025. Motion made by Lynn Piazek, seconded by Erin Williamson, any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous, thank you. Last one. That would be you, Donna. Okay, I move that we extend the contract of the Director of Business Services and Operations through June 30th, 2028, including a 3% increase in salary for the 2025-2026 school year. Do I have a second to that motion? Stephen? Okay, motion made by Lynn Piazek, seconded by Stephen Lawrence, any discussion on that motion? All those in favor? Unanimous, thank you. Okay.
Vonda, you're awesome.
Wait, thank you, Donna. Any public comment? Okay, we have already gone into executive session, there's no longer need to go into executive session. Do I have a motion to adjourn at 8:32 PM? Lauren, do I have a second? Mike? All those in favor? And that would be unanimous. Thank you, thank you all for tuning in and watching, thank you for coming.